Yo Fred.
Yes, sir.
Are you about ready?
You are ready to go whenever.
Okay. Mr. Clay, you want to go ahead and start it? I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. At this time, would everyone please stand while Ms. Willan does a prayer and we'll do the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the beginning of a new year. We thank you for new beginnings and all that they mean. And I pray, Lord, that this year would be a year that is a blessing to Jackson County, a blessing to these commissioners, and that these commissioners will be a blessing to our county. And we do pray over today's meeting that your hand would be upon it and that your will would be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The agenda, Ms. Willan?
We have no changes to the agenda.
Good. Would you elaborate on what is going to transpire?
Sure. So we have a ten o'clock special meeting scheduled. So we'll just go right through to complete this agenda. And if there's time left before lunch, we would like to go into the first item on that agenda, which is to discuss the FDOT road submittals. And then we need to take a break and come back at one thirty because we have some guests that will be joining us to discuss housing.
Okay.
Make motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner McKinnon. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number one. We have a request for board adoption of a joint resolution with Gadsden County pertaining to Lake Seminole. Mr. John Petrie. How do you pronounce it, John Petrie? Come on up. Come up to the lectern, state your name and spell it for the clerk. And go Bulldogs.
Name's John Petrie. P E T R I E. I live over in Seminole County. Like to make something very clear first off. I do not represent Seminole County. I do not represent the Cater County. I do not represent any political association or affiliation. I'm here because I represent the lake. I live on the lake. I bought the home on the lake fifteen years ago to be able to fish the lake until I could no longer do so. Unfortunately, that started to happen three years ago when Hurricane Michael came through. In September, I go to the county commission meetings pretty much every month. And in September, a gentleman named Paul Pryor. He is a field representative for Sanford Bishop. Came into our meeting and asked the condition of our lake. Instead of trying to tell him the condition of our lake, we volunteered a boat ride. It was a four-hour ride throughout the entire lake. We showed him the overgrowth of hydrola, the hyacinths, the lack of maintenance that has taken place there. The Corps of Engineers has not removed any debris that has fallen in the back channels. By the back channels that I refer to, there is a channel from Cypress Pond to Spring Creek. There is a channel from Spring Creek to the Flint River at Wing Gates. Those channels are very important to the people on the lake because they are a safe haven when weather gets bad. And believe me, I have a nineteen-foot aluminum bass boat. It'll handle rough water, but I use that channel a great deal on bad weather. The only reason it's useful at this time is because the locals have gone out there and cut the debris so that we can get through there with a single boat. As far as the rest of the lake goes, they have not done anything to speak of since the hurricane. Couple of years ago, they came in and started to repair the mechanical aspects of the carp gates. There are three on the lake. They did the mechanical aspect of it, but they didn't do the electrical aspect of it. They're supposed to be gonna take care of that the first of February. And at that time, they will try to put carp back in. We personally think that safety issues needed to come far before this. The overgrowth of the vegetation on the lake that you have a letter from Nick that took pictures and shows you. The vegetation is growing. It's the hydrola and other weeds. There are twenty-three grasses, varieties of grasses growing in the lake. That's what we're told. But they have grown out to the boating channels. The boating channel are kept open only because the boats are utilizing those channels. But in September, we actually got into Spring Creek and could not get up Spring Creek because the hydrola had come to the boating channel. And then the hyacinths have floated down and plugged the boating channels. Now, this is it's worrisome to us because of this. We are also into tournament season. The fishing tournaments that happen come at this time of year. If we don't do something now with this lake, we're gonna lose this lake as an income producer. We already have seen a loss in housing or overnight stays. And even the state park is plugged up. People that have rented the cabins and stayed there have made comments. They're not coming back because of it. I personally have a friend out of Indiana that for the last nine years has come down and spent the winter here. He made the comment to me this year, I'm not coming back. There's too many weeds out there. I can't fish. I can't enjoy myself. And again, the Corps of Engineers has not done anything since the hurricane. And I keep pounding on that because we don't see them do anything. They've now sprayed three times since September on fish pond drain. The reason they've sprayed it three times is because they can't figure out what to do to kill the weeds. The first time they sprayed, nothing happened. They sprayed a second time, increasing the amount of herbicide that they used. Nothing happened. They now have sprayed the third time. We have been told they have two hundred thousand dollars this year to spend to spray whatever part of the lake they can with that herbicide. They're bringing in a specialist, supposed to be here January thirtieth through February fourth. If the water levels will allow him to do so, they'll start to spray Spring Creek at that time. He will come back later and also spray more. Not only is our lake in dire condition, even the Corps of Engineers equipment is broke down. They haven't maintained it, the airboat in particular. I talked to the gentleman that did spray this last time, and they're a subcontractor. They used to have three boats in their business. They don't have but one now, and they're not busy at all. So there is possibility of them spraying if we can get the Corps of Engineers to move out. Backing up on the Corps of Engineers, we have to understand their fiscal year is October first to October first. We're not gonna get a lot of work done this year from them because they don't have the money. Since our meeting with Paul Pryor, and he has dealt with Sanford Bishop, and Mr. Bishop has sent a letter to the general of the Southeast United States Corps of Engineers. And in that letter, he had told the general that enough money was not budgeted for this year. They hadn't put in for it, so they weren't gonna get it. That the Corps of Engineers had told him that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars was maintenance cost for the lake every year. Well, he asked for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that letter. Unfortunately, he didn't realize that we're not looking to maintain the lake. We need to recoup the lake. The work that has not been done has got to have a cost. And they need to be able to come out there, remove the debris from the back channels. There's a channel from Cypress Pond to Spring Creek that has not only debris in it, there are trees that are leaning over it that are gonna fall sooner or later. But there's not one bit of concern from the Corps. They have come in with a very large airboat. It's stainless steel. It's nice and shiny. They have toured the lake. Again, nothing is being done.
Mr. Bishop is the congressman for?
Congressman my area.
For your area of Georgia?
Yes, sir.
Willan. They have put together quite a bit of information here along with the resolution, which we will be dealing with shortly. But this has been a problem. I know Commissioner Hill and I've talked about it in the past in board meetings. Trying to get the Corps to not only serve our side of the lake, but Georgia's side. So now we're wanting to join forces with Georgia. Please make sure that Congressman Dunn, Senator Rubio, and Senator Scott gets a letter from the board along with a copy of this resolution, but also with a copy of the information that Mr. Petrie has provided us. Hopefully, all of us working together can get something done. Lake Seminole on our side, it's worse than your side. And we've been fighting with them. I know I have talked to everything from the general down, the general out of Mobile, down to the guy that runs the office over here in Chattahoochee. And not having any luck. So maybe if we can get the legislative delegations from both states, who's your senator? Probably what? Could I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir, please.
Would you forward this information to both of your senators?
We can do so.
Okay, make sure they get it. We'll make sure the two from Florida get it, and our congressman, obviously, your congressman's aware.
I think I'd like to suggest one thing. I think we need to slow down just a little bit. It's okay. I appreciate what you want to do, and I agree. Let me get Gadsden County on board. I have not approached them yet to get the resolution. I'm hopefully gonna be there the eighteenth or next one.
We need to reach out to their congressman, too. It's not going. They have a congressman, too.
Who?
Gadsden County.
Do they have a different congressman?
That's right. They got they got we'll get. So you'll have two congressmen involved. What our initial intent was, gentlemen, please let me finish this. We intended the end of February, if we could get Gadsden County included, to at that time come back to you folks and address you. If we type the letters or get the letters, I think it would be better than all the counties giving individual letters because we know we want to ask for one point five million dollars initially.
Okay.
And after that, it would be the eight hundred and fifty thousand maintenance cost. But we have a pretty good insight in all that.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand is not enough.
Agreed. Agreed.
Obviously, that's why we're in the position we're in today. They're not devoting enough time and money to it. So let's not cut it. Let's leave it. Whatever some expert will tell us what we need. That's what we need to be asking, telling them to ask for.
We have been told one point five to two million dollars.
Go for two.
Okay. Wade, I'm sorry. Wade Godsey and I and two others are the ones that are doing this. I'm not alone in this.
Okay.
Wade is willing to do the clerical aspect. His wife is a paralegal, so we get a little incentive there, too. So.
All right. Coordinate with Willan, you want to coordinate with Rhett or you on the letters?
You coordinate with me.
I need you.
I'll get it to you. Carolyn will get it to you.
Bridgette has my email number. You can email me. That would be the best.
Okay, the Bridgette will email you.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hill and a second by Commissioner Donifro to approve this resolution. And are there any questions from the board?
Who is Nick Carwell? Who wrote this letter? Nick used to live over here. I mean, he lives over where I live now. I think highly of Nick. He's a very intelligent man. Like I said, he lived here. He helped me get the representative out in the lake. He helped me out there. He took the pictures that you see in that letter. And he still, I term them as advisors because each one of these gentlemen, he's retired FAA. Nick has education and whatever. I am an old country boy from Yankee Town, New York State. But I love the lake as much as I can. And we have one other gentleman that is a retired federal lawyer that used to represent the Corps of Engineers.
Okay. All right. I've got a motion. I've got a second to pass this resolution. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. It doesn't take us long. Coordinate with Ms. Daniels. I want to coordinate getting this information to the appropriate legislative delegation so we can make this happen. And believe me, you say October, we need to get with Gadsden County ASAP and get this done, get it moving because they're working on the budget right now.
And I am trying to
Actually, I think the budget will drop in March.
Oh, really?
Yes. I think the federal budget is delivered with the capital in March.
We need, yes, you're right.
We need to be moving right now.
You're right. I was under the assumption they didn't do it, didn't have it adopted till October.
No. The president proposes his budget. I think it goes to the hill in March.
Okay.
We want to get ahead of that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your help and stay in contact with Ms. Daniels and Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Rhett.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't know how much I appreciate the time and the comments you've made.
We appreciate what you're doing. It's something that we all need.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Okay. Hunter Fox.
Good morning.
Carolyn, make sure they have Willan's contact information. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Hunter.
Yeah, this is a request to adopt a resolution establishing signature authority for permits to work in designated rattleways. Typically, it's a process that goes before you guys, but we're making it easier for you and decreasing that administrative burden.
Mr. Rush, are you in favor of that? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Page. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thanks, Hunter. Okay, Ms. Judy.
Morning, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to recognize the Employee of the Month for January twenty twenty-two. I'll read the proclamation, but I will pay that it's just Julie Warren from the Veterans Services Office. So whereas Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month to recognize one employee to represent the various departments, and whereas Julia Warren has began her employment with Jackson County on September seventh, nineteen ninety-four, and currently serves in the position of Veteran Services Specialist for the Veteran Services Office. She has been selected as the Employee of the Month for January twenty twenty-two for the standards that she displayed in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Ms. Warren is an exemplary employee who demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces, her loyalty and commitment to Jackson County are noticed and admired by her coworkers. And whereas Julie is a consistently friendly and delightful employee that handles issues that arise in a timely and efficient manner, she is regularly finding new and inventive ways, innovative ways to partner with other organizations in the county and to better serve our veterans. She sets a good example for other employees with her work ethic and is an asset to the Veteran Services Office and the veterans of our county. Recently, Ms. Warren demonstrated her enthusiasm for Jackson County by participating wholeheartedly in an employee morale-building exercise, and she also volunteered to help at the Christmas party without being asked. Ms. Warren is an all-around quality individual and a loyal employee to the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Ms. Julia Warren on her selection as Employee of the Month for twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the Employee of the Month for January twenty twenty-two. Authorized fifty dollars and a paid day off and adopt the proclamation.
Got a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Judy. Okay. Consent agenda items. Are there any questions?
I move to approve this consent agenda items.
Got a motion back to Mr. Page, second back to Mr. Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right, Zach Gilmore.
Good morning, y'all. Y'all doing all right this morning? We're just here to give a quarterly update to the board for JCEDC and the activities that we have been involved with and will be involved with in the upcoming weeks and months. So currently, we're working twenty-two leads and thirty-two projects. Those include advanced manufacturing, logistics, and distribution, aerospace and aviation, medical health care, entrepreneurship, and value-added ag. As you all know, Gulf Power has transitioned to Florida Power and Light on January first. Our team had the opportunity to meet with Crystal Stiles. She's the Senior Director of Economic Development. And we met with her in December, and we're gonna continue to build our relationship and will be in Daytona in early February where we will attend the FPL Power in Florida Illumination Event. On a similar note, the Gulf Power Economic Symposium is now known as the FPL Northwest Florida Economic Symposium, which will be held March eighth and ninth in Destin. We encourage you all to join us for this event. If you've been in the past, you know the quality of the program and education that is offered there. It's a really good time. Unfortunately, we were not able to go last year due to COVID. They pushed it off two or three times and then canceled it. So as of January first, our executive director or president and CEO now, Tiffany Garland began representing JCEDC on the Florida's Great Northwest Executive Committee and is serving as the marketing chair for that organization. She has also began serving as the alternate state director for Florida on the Southern Economic Development Council Board, which represents seventeen southern states. We are looking forward to the connections that will be made through these channels and the continued strengthening of our relationship with our regional and state-level partners. Just prior to the holidays, we met with a prospect who was interested in a nine-thousand-square-foot warehouse located on the Endeavor main campus. Commissioner Peacock was there as well. He was able to meet with them. We have continued to have regular communication with that prospect and expect that it will continue to move forward. We also have some other prospects looking at the Endeavor campus as well and that same building. Our team has had a very busy beginning of the year. We hit the ground running, no doubt about it. It was a little bit of a surprise. We expected some work, but we didn't expect this many projects and leads to hit us at the beginning of the year, but we're pleasantly surprised. Last week, we did meet with three potential projects, and two of those, as I mentioned, were on the county-owned Endeavor property. Our office will be representing Jackson County at the Rural Counties Days at the Capitol on January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. We will have a booth set up in the Capitol Courtyard on the twenty-seventh, so please join us for that event if y'all are available. We do begin traveling the following day on the twenty-eighth, and we'll be attending two trade shows, meeting with companies who manufacture equipment for the HVAC industry and tile and flooring industry. We are also slated to travel with Enterprise Florida in March as part of the Team Florida Program Meeting with site consultants in California. We do have a few projects that are in due diligence period with pending property sales and hope to be able to make those announcements during the second quarter of the year or third, hopefully second, but possibly third, depending on how everything goes. And the last thing I'd like to say is just thank y'all, all y'all, for your assistance and continued support of JCEDC. You know, we've been working hard, but we couldn't do anything that we do without y'all's support. And everything that we've done thus far has, a lot of that can be attributed to what you've done for us. We really do appreciate y'all. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
Just time. Appreciate your work.
Thank y'all very much.
Keep pushing. We need more businesses.
Yes, sir. We will do, and capital and investment.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Zach. Ms. Carol.
Two items on the agenda this morning. First is the appointment of a member from the chair, from the Board of County Commissioners for the canvassing board. We, as part of the statutory requirements, we are required to have three members, supervisor of elections, the county court judge, and typically the chair of the county commission. In addition to that, we would also like an alternate appointed because we understand sometimes things happen, and so we'd like to have an alternate appointed as well. So that's what I'm here about this morning, about the county canvassing board.
Okay.
Typically, it is the chair.
Just stand by.
I can't. He can't.
He can't.
I will serve as the primary one. It will entail it entails going to Orlando for a full day of training. So, I mean, I don't mind serving, but now we've got to come up with an alternate. So.
I've always wanted, but I can't.
These three can't. Do you want to be the alternate? If not, we'll name somebody. We'll find somebody.
And it doesn't have to be a member of this board.
No.
Yeah, I think at this time, I'd prefer you to find somebody else if we can. If you can't, then.
Okay. Ms. Carol.
I make a motion to appoint Jim Peacock for the canvassing board. Second, Ms. Jan.
Got a motion back to Mr. Page, second back to Mr. McKinnon.
You may want to consider Ms. Jan. She's really good. Jan Pollard.
I will. I have somebody else. But anyway, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Ms. Carol, I will get back with you on the alternate.
Okay. Just as a reminder, the actual meeting in Orlando is March thirty-first, but the deadline for registration for the training is January thirty-first.
Okay.
Do you want me to attend that training?
I think you probably should.
I would recommend it as well.
That way you're up to speed on what's going on? But do y'all have any objection to me selecting an alternate? Okay. I'll select an alternate. I gotta find somebody that's willing to do it, but I got a couple people. Now, go ahead.
Okay. So with that, you had asked me, Commissioner Peacock, to speak on the electronic filing for Form Six, Full and Public Disclosure of Financial Interest. Some of you may have received a letter from the Commission on Ethics that would announce that from here forward, Form Six would be filed electronically and no longer be allowed to be filed through paper. That is up and running. That system is up and running, and that is only for Form 6 filers. Form 1 still paper until January 2023. So for Form 6, there usually is a county coordinator, and the Commission on Ethics indicated that the county coordinator for that was Carolyn Tidwell, but I wonder if it might be Carlin Tidwell. And with that, you have to have an email address, a good email address on file. The Commission on Ethics will email everyone who's supposed to file a Form 6 by March of this year, March 1 of this year. But if you're super anxious and you want to go ahead and get started, you can log on to the Commission on Ethics website and click on "I am a filer." "I am a filer," and then it'll walk you through the process of getting set up so that you can go in, look at that dashboard, and look at the requirements.
When's the deadline to have it filed?
June 30.
Okay.
Or July 1, I should say. We named for June 30. So one very important issue is some individuals would file a tax return in lieu of completing the document. That's no longer allowed. You can't attach anything, no tax returns, no other attachments. Every line must be filled in. So if you're someone who likes to wait a little bit later, you might want to go ahead and get logged on and get familiar with the system so that you know what is required of you and have that information and be real familiar with the system. But again, if you're wondering if you have an email address that is current, because you have to have one that's current, contact Carlin, and she can make sure that you have a current email address on file.
I think we all have current email addresses, and we all have to file the Form 6, right?
Right.
So.
And if you're a candidate for one of these offices that needs to file a Form 6, you would file it electronically, print it out, and then submit that printed copy with your qualifying paperwork.
I just wanted to make sure that we were all on board and knew what this was. I didn't know if y'all got the letter or not. I got the letter, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'll get you the information about signing up for the class.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Warren.
Morning, sir.
I've got a couple things for you this morning. A couple grants approval agreements for your approval. The first one is for a state 911 grant, S-202112-10. It is for next-generation 911 core services and an emergency services IP network between NGA 911 LLC and the county. Also, the ESNET agreement between the 12 counties and Region 1.
Okay. I got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Pate to apply or accept this grant. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
The next one is a state grant, S-2021-12-9. This is for configuration and testing of our Motorola Bestin 911 system to accept the ESNET.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Hill, second back to Commissioner Donovan. Will this have any, us moving have any bearing on what they're getting ready to do?
It will, but we will need to time it with our next state grant cycle for new call handling system equipment. But for now, they're going to set everything up in Neil's office.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And the last thing is the contract agreement between NGA 911 and the county. I sent this to Michelle. She reviewed it, and she also sent in.
I have a motion to approve the agreement. I'll ask Chairman to sign.
Okay. Have a motion back to Commissioner Donovan, a second back to Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Dave Brunner.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
This is a request for board approval of the ESO software and authorize to proceed with the noted changes to the county contract agenda.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Brett.
First up I have for you is a request for board approval of a work authorization for DHM Engineering to perform design inspection for Blue Springs Stormwater Restoration Project Phase 2. This agreement will be continued on grant agreement and state funding.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second back to Commissioner Pate. Any questions?
And I didn't read this real carefully, but this is obviously for design services. Is any of that stormwater work been done?
It has. So a lot of it's been done on the front end. We were hoping to get all of it completed on Phase 1, but the funding ran short, so we reapplied, and then so Phase 2. What basically this is going to encompass is the driveway coming into the facility is going to be resurfaced and curved with a stormwater catch system put in and then expanded stormwater retention area. So we'll have to tweak some of the plans to stay within budget, and then, you know, that'll encompass re-advertising for bids, bid management, overall project management.
We're also approving this, approving DHM as the upper construction engineering inspection services as well as part of this.
Yes, sir. That's what the request is.
Will that design throw that water away from the spring, throw it back?
We're going to try to get everything from the driveway back towards Blue Springs Road. There's kind of like a little bottom right there next to the gate. So try to get it away from the park, but we also have, we already have an existing stormwater facility there that will have to be expanded and some more drains put in.
All right. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Brett.
All right. Next up is a board approval of confidentiality agreement between Northwest Florida Water Management District and Jackson County. This agreement will allow Water Management District to disclose financial information regarding the acquisition of Peacock Ridge property.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney. Brett, would you make sure that you keep Commissioner Hill in the loop on all these negotiations that's going on?
Yes, sir.
Any more, any questions?
The only question I got, and I'm familiar with the spring that's denoted there, but it's hard to tell. That's not a first magnitude spring. Is that a second magnitude?
It's smaller. I'm not real sure exactly what size.
It's hard to tell by the information.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Next.
All right. Last up for me is board approval of emergency declaration for A&amp;N Boys for Grass and Sun for emergency pump services for a lift station we had go down in the middle.
Okay, got a motion back to Commissioner Pate, second back to Commissioner Hill. Any questions?
And these funds will be coming out of utilities capital outlay.
All those in favor?
Just a question. It seems like we've had a lot of problems with that pumping station.
We sure have.
Is there a fix in the?
Well, so what we're doing right now is we're working on designs to put out for bid for complete rehab. That station's about 20 years old, give or take, so that's the expected life of any utility system or utility component, I should say. So that's going to include reline the wet well, new pumps, new control panel, new valves, everything. So the whole station will be completely new. What we think is happening without really knowing is that some of the gases that build up within the wet well have been finding their way up to the control panel. So that's been causing a lot of the electrical components to fail. So we sealed those off. We replaced the salt starters, basically what they are, and hopefully that'll get us by. Like I said, we're hoping to use, well, I didn't say this, but we're hoping to use some of the state funding for our Indian Springs expansions because this system is in downstream of Indian Springs. It is, you know, capacity-wise, it's kind of on the borderline anyway, so we're hoping to use some of that state funding to go ahead and do a full rehab, and that way we'll add a capacity and a newer components to not have these issues in the future.
Do we have an idea of what the estimated cost of a complete rehab of that lift station is? Any idea?
$250 plus, $250 to $400, give or take. It's hard to say right now what wage pricing is. I mean, I could get your price now, but it'd be good in two weeks.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks. Jeffrey, register.
Yes, first I have to get is a request board approval to purchase two Cat 309 mini excavators out of the Florida Sheriff's Association contract.
Motion back to Commissioner Hill, second back to Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Make sure one of them goes to District 5. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Just a related issue, but the work that we had done over there off of Old US Road in Watson, that was done by one of those mini excavators.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Worked out okay?
Yes, sir. They're, they're, they're a big asset so far, the two we've already got. And with these, you know, you can even run different attachments and all that on them, so they're, they are, they're well worth it.
Okay. Next one's yours also.
Next thing I've got is a request board approval of change order 1 for Blueberry Drive elevation project. This change order will add $131,987 to the original contract to cover the increased material costs at the time the project would be.
Okay, got a motion back to Commissioner Hill.
Second with a question.
Second by Commissioner Pate. Go ahead.
Is this FEMA mitigation?
Yes. Right.
All right. Where's that money going to come from?
Mr. Hill?
$131,000.
Well, construction was on my way. That's true.
You suggest he, Mr. Hill, pay for it?
No, he owes us, man.
We're on control of them all.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Register.
All right. And then the next thing is request board approval of work authorization for Gatlin Geller Restrip College Drive in Graceville.
The motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Pate. I have a question. Who receives the tax revenue off of that road?
I understand.
Some of it's in the county, some of it's the city.
But they, everybody's telling me that when these roads cross like through, through the city or whatever, they are county roads. They're not city roads. They are county roads.
Yeah, but there's gas tax money.
Right.
Are they claiming it for tax purposes?
When you say they're the city of Graceville in this particular case.
We are, and they get money.
Your proportion.
They get a. But they have to submit mileage to the state to qualify. They, you know, like, they may be submitting, Graceville will be submitting, what, 20 miles maybe of roads and to get their share of tax revenue. Where's Danielle? And I need her.
It's no different than the one South Boulevard.
Right, South Street.
South Street, here, and some more that comes in the Mariana.
I'm not so sure it's as clear as you think it is. I don't know.
The gas tax is collected by the county.
And it's based on population.
And then the city gets a.
The state forces the tax, and then it comes.
Because the county and then.
Prorated out based upon.
Why do they not use and manage what you're saying?
Pardon?
Are you asking, should they be paying for that with their funds?
Right.
Okay. That would be a administrative question of the year.
Why? I think it's based on population.
It is based on population.
It's not based on mileage. That we distribute it to.
The way you distribute tax money is based on, I mean, gas tax is based on population of each city.
Does it come to the county first?
We get our part. We get it. We get something off it from the city. It's like Jacobs don't have a gas station, so they don't get anything.
Where's Danielle?
She's sick.
Oh, okay.
She'll be back next week.
Peacock, what you trying to do?
No, I'm just trying to figure out because they have to submit, according to what I've been told, they submit X number of miles.
But we know they're not doing it.
I don't know what they're doing. That's why I'm.
That's why I'm saying you just have to administrate.
I'm asking you a question. But if, I mean, if they're getting the tax money off of it, then they should be striping the road, is what I think.
Well, all of it's from the city, right?
Now, I mean, Florida Street, Grand Ridge, they just resurfaced it down there.
Well, those things trail up to Grand Ridge, the county road, but.
Well, that's what, trust me, I'm going round and around on this thing.
But all of this that they're asking to restripe is in the city from '77 to State Route 2. That's all inside the city.
But anyway. So I stirred up this kind of worms. But we do need to try to come up with something definitive on that, Ms. Michelle.
I don't know that what you're talking about is going to affect you.
My mother lives on that road, so I would, I'd rather see y'all spend the $2,000 and just strike it and be done with it. Just putting it out there on the record.
Did we vote?
Not yet. We're getting ready to. Y'all going to vote to strike Michelle's mother's road?
I don't want.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. But we do need to look for an answer because this is a recurring problem. And I'm not objecting to this, okay? I just want to know what we can and can't do, or what we shouldn't, shouldn't do.
There should be some, I wouldn't call it a policy, but at least some method to, when we run into this in the future, we've got some historical precedence governing what.
I think there's. Some supposed to be some sort of interlocal agreement.
I think that the truth is every situation has its own backstory with who agreed to do what. Some have interlocals, some don't, but, I mean, every last situation, Sneed's has a situation, Grand Ridge has a story. So, I mean, unless you want to adopt a blanket policy that's going to impact everyone differently.
I think the north part of that is in the county, and the south part towards 2 is in the city.
I think everything between '77 and 2 is in the city.
Okay.
I've never really looked at it, but what I've been told is it's shared by the county and the city. But that could be wrong.
Jeffrey. Change order.
All right. Request board approval, change order 1 for Districts 2 and Haven. Change order on there the road on New Salem, Christie, and Cliff from 20 foot to 18 foot, and there'll be no change in price that will adjust it with the thickness of asphalt.
Which roads?
New Salem and.
Christie, Cliff, and Slough.
The movement, Chairman.
Got a motion back to Commissioner McKinney, second back to Commissioner Pate. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Go ahead, Jeffrey.
All right. Then we request a board approval of change order 1 for D2 Chip Seal. This change order is for additional cost to fill in the sinkhole fell in on the east end of College Road. It's $2,300.
Got a motion back to Commissioner Pate.
Second.
Second back to Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
All right. The last thing I got is request board approval to place speed bumps on Sanders Avenue. It's been requested by residents to help reduce speeds in front of the Semester Healthcare up there to slow people down between the stop signs. And basically puts speed bumps on either end of the nursing halls.
The movement, Chairman.
Got a motion back to Commissioner McKinney.
Second.
Second back to Commissioner.
There again, that's in the city.
But.
They've been asking for it for a long time, but I don't think they're going to get. And that issue, they've been asking for it for a long time, but I don't think they gonna get, they gonna like what they get.
Before we vote, I would like to hear from, uh, Chief Brunner, uh, because the ambulance is in and out of there. I think he's got some thoughts on it.
Yes, uh, just before you guys vote, just wanted to bring up that, uh, Sanders Avenue, we have the skilled nursing facility located at ten eighty-three, which is just on the west side of College Avenue, College Drive, excuse me. Uh, since the relocation, we respond typically up Cliff Street, uh, north, go down east Sanders Avenue till we make to the nursing home. We used to, uh, go in the back entrance between the old hospital, that was an EMS entrance, but since the pandemic started, everyone is funneled through the front entrance of the hospital or the nursing facility. In twenty twenty-one, we responded over two hundred times to the nursing home there. Uh, there was around two hundred transports, so. And, and, you know, we all know those are fragile, uh, patients that live there with, with health problems, so it's not, you know, it's a, it's one of our bigger collars in that area, so just be mindful, um, that ambulance is going to have to go over the speed bump at least two hundred times. Uh, or a set when we're transporting out.
Charlie, have you, have you had any conversation with the administrator there?
I have not, sir, um, but I, I do know if it's still the same lady that's the administrator and I can reach out to it. Um, I just, just wanted to throw my two cents in from EMS standpoint. I understand the safety and concern that the residents have.
She endowed straight of some, uh, security there, because she says it's getting ridiculous and outrageous, what's going on, traffic up and down that road.
And it is, it is a straightaway through there. You know, people come across from the college and that road goes all the way out to Brown Town and further, you know, going east. So is there an opportunity to put a four-way stop anywhere? There is a, uh, well, it's a two-way, um, right there in front of the college and the skilled nursing. So east and westbound traffic stops, I believe, well, maybe a four-way, but.
It, whether it's four-way or not.
I, I just noticed.
Just before, just something to consider. I, I don't want to sway you in this way, but it is a high traffic area.
They end up, once you put them in, they end up causing more complaints than not having them.
I wonder, I mean, I don't, I don't, I know the police department is, uh, is very active up there, so I don't know if that's something they've been able to tackle or not.
That's all we need to do.
Jello, is there anything you can do short of speed bump? Because I'd like Commissioner Donofeu, I've heard this.
Well, uh, according to, we've talked with, uh, I can't remember the name, Brett, with the nursing home. And, and a citizen right there. I mean, we, I don't know if it, it would have the situation on Sanders, but we may be able to put a four-way stop at College and Sanders right there. The, uh, one of the main, uh, citizens that call, he lives right on the corner of Sanders and, and, uh, and College, and he's the one, you know, and, and, and people do fly by there. And, and I'm like, I don't know, he said they've tried to get law enforcement involved and get them to set up, they go sit up down there in the wide open and they're not, according to him, not doing what they're supposed to do.
I, I know that we had a situation on Fourth Street, Mariana, Florida, across the hill, where people are flying down that. Instead of putting speed bumps there, we put a couple of four-way stops and it's helping tremendously. People will stop at a four-way stop, they may, they may slow down and cruise through it, but they'll at least, they'll at least slow down.
Yes, Brett, go ahead.
Our request actually came in from the county, City of Graceville, and they were putting the rumble strip, which they all run over to the rumble strip. That's when different highway out spoke with the, uh, citizen there on the corner who's been completed this case to the city council.
For eight years.
Well.
And, uh, this was the best we have on the, one of the main issues is that parking for the nursing home is actually perpendicular to the road. So when they're stacked up, when they back out, they're in traffic, so, um, it's, it's, it's a lot easier to slow down prior to coming up to the nursing home, uh, versus having more people have backing them in traffic.
So Jeffrey, when you put in the speed bump, you're going to put it in the lane of travel that they're coming to, right? You're not, you'll only go one lane, or are you going all the way across the street?
We're going to go all the way across the street.
Okay. If you don't go all the way across the.
Well, yeah, I don't make it to go around.
The city has a jurisdiction of the speed limits, and say, you know, on our county roads inside of the thing, have they thought about just lowering the speed limit?
It, it are, it is.
That don't make them slow down.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the people, and when they come by, and, and not only do you have a nursing home there, you got a assisted living facility right around the road. And, and they're just kind of.
What's their recommendation from their, from their side of, uh, the city of Graceville? I mean, what, are they?
They're evidently, they cannot get any help from the city of Graceville, and they can't, so they're.
Yeah, we reached out to the city of Graceville.
Well, they did now. They didn't used to though, because they, they didn't want to do it either.
Is it a city street or a county?
It's a city street right there.
Whoa.
We can't go in there and put, that's kind of real good.
The same way as the college.
Now, this goes into the same scenario, because it crosses college that we just talked about striking. But when Sanders goes out, as soon as you get right there, about where they want to put the speed bumps, it turns to county and goes on out seven or eight miles.
The part that they want to put it in definitely is the city.
Is in the city.
Now, we're about to college.
Is it a city-owned road or a county-owned road? Is it, what color is the sign that is, that is made on it's on?
They're all green.
Okay, well, that's county. It's white city.
Well, but.
You can't go.
Majority.
But, but that's, but that's what I'm saying, this, this is that same scenario we were just talking about a second ago. It, it starts all the way out by Highway seventy-seven, which is definitely in the city, and then it turns and goes into a county road that runs on out to the, out to the east. So who's, who's responsible?
I, I just be, I'd be just interested in seeing what the city council of Graceville wants to do besides the rumble strip, if they come up, if they don't get numerous complaints if you put a real rumble strip, I mean, that's a nightmare. So, uh, but i- have we reached out to the city council members or the chair?
I, I've not, mostly.
I just be. I mean, I, I would say you need to get more people involved.
I would draw my motion, Chairman, and should I talk to Michelle over the, uh, western city?
Okay.
I'll draw mine too.
All right, Maureen, you get that?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I would recommend y'all get together, Jeffrey or whoever, along with Grace, the town of Graceville, and figure this thing out. I mean, we need to do something, obviously, but.
And Mr. McKinney, if you, if you could see if you could be present, man, that'd probably give you some direction to help us with what, what they really, the body language of that board is.
And, but like Mr. Donofeu said, speed bumps, they're tough. People hate them.
They will call, call it an act there, somebody don't know what.
And, you know, and some of the, some of the graphs that they're saying too, there, I think there's a little bar.
That's the issue there.
Down the road, closer to the city, so when they come, someone just blowing through a stop sign, some of them, so they're just trying to get slowed down.
I think if, if, if both the boards kind of kind of have a common goal, that would be, uh, that would be better for them, because they're the ones, they're the ones that get some complaints back.
Right.
So we need, we need to incorporate them.
Red, uh, Daniel, who did you get that request from? Did it up, is it up for rumble strip? Me? Okay, okay, all right.
They make the most of the table.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pate, second by Commissioner Hill to table this. Hopefully y'all have something for us for the next meeting.
Okay.
And McKinney, you may want to actually ask them to put that on the agenda, that way the public has some alpha opinion, because if they, they don't do that, all people, uh, you know, kick it back to us and say a decision without the, the public knowing about over there, that might put us in an awkward position, let them public speak out against, with order.
Jeffrey, are you leaving? Or are you going to stick around? Well, I got something for you.
I'll be here.
Huh?
We got a DOT meeting after.
Okay. I've got something around table, okay. All right, moving on, uh. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Hunter? Yes, sir. Hi there. Um, first item for you is request for a change order number three for the sheriff's office interior repair contract. This is for replacing the ceiling grid, um, in the, the conference room of sheriff's office.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Pate. Is this the damage that we voted on last time to repair?
No, sir, this is separate, this is, uh.
Tell them, boys, to stay out the ceiling.
This is their main conference room area. Um, there was a lot of extra damage to do, uh, to ceiling tiles, and there was like mismatching ones, so they're going to go back, they want to go back.
Are there any other areas that need to be looked at? I mean.
Um, yeah, I feel like this should be the last one. Um, I, I believe so, this is, we've kind of vetted this, they're almost done with all the construction and the painting and everything, so this should be the last one.
All right.
Offer a motion to approve the, uh, change order.
Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Yeah.
You made a motion.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Uh, the next item is for asking for your approval of the certificate of final completion for the sheriff's office roof repair and to authorize final payment amount of thirty-one thousand.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Pate.
Question, we get all the warranties and guarantees.
Yes, sir, we get thirty-year warranty, and it's good, good for them.
Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Hunter, the next one's yours.
So the last, the last meeting in December, we brought the broadband agreement to you. Um, there was one thing that needed to be changed, or a couple, two small things. Um, the main thing is the lease payment language I talked about is going to be changed to a rent payment instead of a lease. That way they, the P T group can get financing on those properties that they lease from us.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pate. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question, too. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
When, when is this going to be executed?
This is it, this is the execution right now, so.
So what kind of timeframe from this date forward are we looking at?
So they have, so this is from, like I mentioned, in December, um, they have a hundred eighty days, this is their due diligence days, to do all their designs, and identify properties, and get all that preliminary work completed, so from there, we're going to have a meeting scheduled, they'll bring an update to you, you know, periodically, every month.
What's the total completion date? You got one eighty on your due diligence?
For completion of the whole project, I think it says three years.
Or, where the date they start.
Where you know they start, so that's.
They start digging niches, they got four years.
So, but they get a hundred eighty days to do the diligence.
You get everything.
And then four years, so we're talking four and a half years.
The day.
That's complete for that, so there's different phases to it in between, so the first phase could be up and running within.
Yeah, that's, that's my question, I'm talking about.
The whole county.
Even to me.
Even to you.
What it says is actually, it says four years following the closing of the project financing described in Article Four here, or five years following the date of the issuance of the notice of commencement. So it's a either or type thing. I guess whichever, whichever is short. Uh, two fifteen. Also, though, I have a question.
Why?
Uh, right above that, uh, project plans, it says, uh, the county shall have ten days to review the project plans and provide any comments. Is that really enough time for us to look? I, I'm assuming it's going to be a fairly complex set of plans, and I'm assuming that you will be the one that will be reviewing those plans and issuing any comments?
Yeah, we have some people on, kind of, we've been working with in the past, to, like, engineers to review things, so we can do that. Um, ten days, I guess, even if it's a small window, um, we can ask for additional time if you want to, um, within.
I mean, again, I don't know how, how restrictive they'll be on that, but that's a very short period of time to review what I would assume would be a fairly complex set of plans.
We do plan to work with them on the front end, all these things, so that's more like a, just kind of an informal approval.
It'd just be lines on the road.
Yeah, still, we don't know where they are, and there's, of course, there's going to be facilities that'll be built.
Yeah, there'll be some.
Well, we're talking twenty-two point seven, hopefully completion.
Well, this is the outside. They, they're telling us.
That's the ones we need the most, that's the problem.
We don't need the inside, we need the outside. Well, it may go with. They're going to do it in phases, okay?
One, one other question, I, I'm sure this has been discussed, and I may have just missed it, but they're to provide service at the end of the project in ninety-eight percent of the county, correct?
Correct.
That's what it says, ninety-eight percent of the county. Is that, again, is that ninety-eight geographically percent of the county, or how, how is, what is the ninety-eight percent?
We, I think we.
Population, households?
We had discussed population, yes.
I think that may need to be put in there, it's not.
In agreement specifically?
I, I would say, I mean, when I read it, I just was, I questioned myself, what are we talking ninety-eight percent of?
I do, I do believe. Yeah, so households, individuals.
So that they won't receive the service?
They will.
Will receive it.
Will have access to the service, yeah.
Yeah, so they, the goal is everybody gets it, but it's, they're going, it's going to be a hybrid system.
I don't, I thought we're not.
Then you may have somebody that, you know, grandma lives two miles down the road.
But we addressed that there, that, that we said they would microwave that. There should be a hundred percent because of the population, should it not?
We put ninety-eight because you can't, you can't get, like, maybe some households you miss, like, in order to, like, make it kind of fair to them, you want to say you want to give it a hundred percent to everybody, because who's going to be able to track a hundred percent of entire decks, kind of, so there's kind of a window of.
The ones that don't have it will be called, and I'm sure you.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be working to get it to every household. All right, any more questions?
Yes, uh. The, uh, the, the payment, we're looking at fifty percent of the net operating income, and I know it's in there that, uh, if we can't agree what that is, then we hire an independent auditor to come in and look at their books, and they've got to make their books available to us, so that we can determine if that's a, what they're proposing is fair. Then it says, or one hundred dollars.
So I think it's the, the gr- the, the greater of, like, if they're not, I mean, making any profits, they're still going to pay us the hundred dollars.
We, we'll make at least a hundred dollars a year.
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
That's probably where it goes for a while.
Okay.
Any more questions?
And you're comfortable with the liquidated damages, uh, Michelle and, and Hunter, if I got it?
I didn't review this, I didn't negotiate this agreement, that was done by neighbors Giblin, so.
But we're comfortable with liquidated damages as per, per acre property, so three hundred dollars per.
At this point, yeah, this, uh, we kind of talked over with Evan and, uh, Rosenthal with neighbors Giblin, and with the P T group, and they've kind of worked out this is the best scenario for them. Uh, we don't envision giving them more than a few acres. I mean, the, the properties they're going to need is for small like data centers, less than acres.
Anything else? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, the last item I have is to request to set up, set a special meeting for January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at three thirty P M to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
You got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, motion carries five zero. Uh, we need to be thinking about where we want to place this money.
Mission probably needs to, you know, see what we want, what we can use it for.
Yes, so what the, what's been happening with the treasury is, we've been operating off the interim final rule for the past, uh, few months, and they finally just released the final rule, um, earlier, late last week. So we've, we had a outlined spending plan that we're going to present to you guys with a several projects, um, but they cha- may change a little bit because of where the final rule, uh, allowed us to use those funds.
As far as what they could be used for.
Yes, the final rule is actually, uh, more inclusive, or allows for more opportunities to use those funds, uh, so we're going to.
Can you give us a copy of that final rule?
Yeah, we want to see what we can.
Yes, I'm sure, so we're.
And for me, it's called paper, Brennan.
So we're trying to get, like, summary of everything, all the changes that were incorporated, because now we know officially what you can, can't spend it on, and so I can get that to you, and hopefully we'll have that document, and also like our spending plan document, kind of show you what we've been looking at, and give you some projects there.
We're going to do it sort of like we did the CARES funding, where we've sorted through with Evan what can and can't, and a recommendation, and then y'all can take it from there and tweak, increase, get rid of, and not include, or include other things. But we'll have it started with something that we know is eligible, but that is what the purpose of that meeting is, for y'all to give us some direction on.
Get that.
Provide us a copy of what we can use it for ASAP.
And pay them, and put it in the box.
Just put it in the box.
And this is four point five of million, you know, for half of the nine million dollars.
Correct.
Yes, so we're gonna, so the intention is to give it a whole nine million sometime this year, so I mean, we're going to go ahead and try to budget as much as we can at a time, and then that'll give us, because we only have until twenty twenty-four to have it obligated, and then twenty twenty-six, I think, to have it suspended. So as soon as we can get something identified, that'll force, but then, we want to, I guess we probably do want to save something, and then as things come up, we can try to address it, so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, um. Yes. All right.
I'm saying we did.
Yes.
You do.
Give a hundred and off here. All right, is Ms. Amber here?
Okay.
All right, we're going into public hearing. Ms. Wendy.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a request to consider transmittal of a large-scale text amendment to add a new property rights element to the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan. As of July first, twenty-twenty-one, Florida statute requires all governments to adopt and include the property rights element in its top plan. Now, December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, the planning commission recommended transmittal of the proposed text amendment.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is there anyone in the room who wants to speak for or against this?
Hold on, hold on. Does the ordinance have to be read too?
I don't know.
All right, go ahead and read it.
An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a new property rights element, providing for an effective state.
Okay, is there anyone here who wants to speak for or against? Or is there anyone online who wants to speak for or against? Red, you have anyone?
I do not see any hands raised.
We're at a public hearing.
While the remotion to transmit large-scale text amendment to F D, F D O, B B O, and the Department of Commerce, I'm in the sign.
Okay, have the motion by Commissioner Donifro. Second by Commissioner Fake. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right. You can play Amber again.
Yes, sir. Now she is online, I believe, in case you all have questions. Um, this is a request to set a public hearing for construction of a ten thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot building to be known as Dollar General and a twenty-six thousand square foot particular use area. The developer is also requesting a variance to allow their driveway access to the two hundred and twenty-nine feet to the nearest driveway access point on Lake Point Road. The project is to be located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Lake Point Road and Highway two thirty-one in, in incorporated Jackson County. And the planning commission recommended approval on January third.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill? Second. Second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions?
Yeah, but the, the variance that we're approving and I'm in favor of it, it's specifically for separation of the driveway into the facility and the next closest driveway.
Yes, sir. Also, there's a dangerous curve in the road where if, that if we went with the county's distance required, it would put it in a dangerous point.
Put a closure to that curve?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jeffrey, didn't we discuss you maybe going out there and beefing up the signage?
We talked about that. Just take the, I'm going to sign this now. I wrote up there. Or if I wrote out there and looked at it. And now, I just heard two hundred and twenty-nine feet, I go back out and measure it. Your closest driveway is just just on the east side of the curve and then two thirty-one. So I, I'll go out there and measure two hundred and twenty-nine feet. I can see whether it's the, the activity that was right there. That's what, that's what it was. But I'll go out and measure.
So this is on two thirty one?
Two thirty, well, yeah, it's on two thirty-one, but it's like.
It's on like. Drive, actually.
Well, you can't.
They all build last week.
Anything else? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mary Smith.
That'll be neat today, too.
Boy, you.
There's a lot of people.
Yes, so, um, so Mary Smith put together a guidebook, which is available to assist the public with their development projects for the county. And the goal is to provide information for our citizens, contractors, partners, and staff as part of the concierge service available throughout the department. The information provides step-by-step information and overview checklist and assistance with residential and commercial projects. So we just wanted to refer this to you all so you can see uh, what we now have available.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill?
What for?
To approve this book, right? To accept this.
Was it just for information? It's got information on it?
They were just giving you all enough meat.
All right, so we don't have a motion.
No, sir. We're just wanted.
Does anyone have any question?
I like to commit my efforts very nicely.
Very well.
She did a great job.
It is, I'm.
Have y'all looked at it?
I haven't looked at all.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Page two sixty-two.
Okay, I don't have your page number. Some thoughts?
Okay. Take, uh, welcome home. And then you go to the index, it says contents, and they're building a home. The next, the backside of it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Says. How, this is talking about applying for permits for other departments. How are these people going to know when the permit is approved?
Yes, sir. So once a development order is approved, the planners advise environmental health and the building services division. Um, they also work with E nine-one-one, and we also advise the customers of that. And then they're able to pull permits with the other divisions. And we also have a resource, and back to this book, available for contact information to the public.
But they, what I'm saying is, there should be something in there that tells these people. Once these things, these permits are approved, we will tell you, or they're rejected.
Be on the website.
Something.
Okay, well, I can.
Just food for thought.
Have a statement in letting them know once it's approved, they will be advised by the planning division.
And up above that, uh, says order application must, or development order application must be submitted and reviewed by the planning division. And you got two big spaces of community development. Did we leave something out?
No, sir. When you justify your margins, um, where it's even on the left and even on the right, it spaces it for you.
Well, somebody needs to address that. We're going to publish this.
Okay, and it may change if we have a statement in there.
Uh, this is something Clay, you may want to address. Uh, notice of commen, commencement. Do they have to file that in person? Or can they file it electronically? If there's, they're sitting out there with Mary. Can they do the notice of commencement from Mary's office or do it online?
Actually, the notice of commencement goes through the building services division when they pull their permits for structures.
But they have, they have to have it recorded at the clerk's office.
That's what I'm looking at.
They have to walk in. There, there's no provision for that. So do it online.
So they must show up at your office.
Or the contractor.
Somebody for that notice of commencement.
We, I need to have one quick question. On this, this, uh, page next to us, when it's going to, our long, is, is there a timeline usually from step one to step seven? Is there a general, I know it varies based upon sizes, you know, buildings, cardinals, and all that. Is there a timeframe on average that we can advertise somewhat? I mean, I don't want to give them unrealistic expectations, but you know, you know, having some timeframe to keep people from calling saying, you know, where am I at in this process? And obviously they can be step system, but it's also they can see this process usually takes three weeks or six weeks or whatever. Is, is there some way to put something there generally?
They got thirty-one days.
Did, put it into the text.
Okay, the text. Okay, that's good.
If you look over on two sixty-seven. About, uh, the second paragraph, they say, this process takes them thirty-one business days. That's one of the things I underline. Why is it going to take thirty-one days?
Forty, yeah.
Well, it's just what's in our code, the, the limit we have. It may take much less than that. It's just letting them know the maximum time it'll take. Because it, because it depends on what board meetings are and, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into what could dictate that.
And our planning staff never sits on anything. They're very quick and thorough and they address things as quickly as they can.
Would it be nice if we had something in there that will, will be done as expeditiously as possible not to exceed thirty-one business days?
We can do that, too.
But going back, uh, oh, what is this? Stop build home process. Step number nine. It says failure to meet, uh, it says you got to, uh, all of the above items shall be posted on the job before any new construction may commence. Permit boards shall be installed so that it may be viewed from the street. Permits, prints, and inspection cards shall be protected from the elements. Failure to meet these requirements will result in inspection not being done by building services. Really?
That's where the building.
You got to post it.
Well, I know you got to post it. But do we really want to put the arm of the law on them?
No.
We're trying to help.
Stop them that up, sure. Yes, sir, we can stop them that up.
They're pretty pleased. Uh, commercial development checklist. You've got, uh, item number two, general development order application. And then you got complete a G D O. I assume that is a general development order application. Shouldn't you put in parentheses, G D O?
Yes, sir.
So that people know what you're referring to?
I believe we can do that.
Because you're tough, we're writing this for people who.
Yes. And I'm not sure if Mary could.
The dumber than I am.
But. But we will, I appreciate your suggestion.
Well, I, I'm li, I'm thinking of someone who just picked this up off the street.
Yes, sir. And we did have some people who weren't familiar with building, read over it. And gave us some good suggestions, but, um, as always, we appreciate your recommendation.
Can I also ask a suggestion? Just, I, I don't, I, I like this layout because does you give a general analysis of what you have to do to process, which most people very rarely do in their lifetime, but once, maybe twice. Can we actually have this published and put in the city halls and see if they would lay this there, maybe have access to it if they don't have to come here? But if they say they're building Graceville, can they go to Graceville and say, uh, we, we have them available to there to read over this without having to come into town, just print some actual, because this would be a good guideline checklist for them to do, just have some, just.
Sure, we can do that. And we can also, it, it will be available in PDF form, so they can email it to them as well. A lot of people prefer not to have paper, but we can accommodate those ways.
Very good.
Who's doing, um, signed and sealed plans? Who's doing the review?
Mr. Biggs does that.
And we're charging half of the permit fee?
Um, where are you reading?
I am on page two seventy. For you, it's number, commercial development checklist, item eleven. Signed and sealed plans.
Yes, sir. That is what is in the fee schedule. And I'm not sure, I've got my hands, but. Uh, in the fee schedule, very, my, page twenty of the booklet said, um, under plan review fee, half the permit fee for commercial projects paid at submission of permit application. That's on the fee schedule.
So how much is that?
Well, it, it just depends. Everything's by square foot and things like that.
Based on your experience, how much money are we talking about?
It just depends on what type of development. I, I, I really don't know off the top.
Well, Ann, do you have any ideas?
What was the question?
I'm trying to find out how much we're having to pay to have plans reviewed. Signed and sealed plans are being reviewed by Mr. Biggs, and we're, he, we're charging half of the permit cost.
We're right this minute, we're actually not charging anything because those are.
I know we're not.
But it strictly depends on what size. We could get an average.
Well, now, is that, we've not waived them for a commercial development.
Yes.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's not for commercial, it's residential. Um, you're right. We just have to get an average based on what size.
I'll be at the special meeting today and I can give you an idea.
I'd like to know because that's.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Biggs is going to be paid, whether he's sitting there looking at my house plans or looking at a possible, like, commercial building.
Yes, sir. Part of the costs of.
Changing the use of an existing building checklist, item number six, staff report. How long does it take you guys to prepare one of those reports?
They're generally prepared, um, by the time you come to the meetings and before that, before we come to the board meetings and planning commission meetings. So probably just generally.
All right, I'm going to let you off the hook with the rest of it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, you want to make sure that it's, it's, it's nice. If we're going to put it out there, we want it to be helpful.
Yes, sir. Now, I appreciate your recommendations. I think they were very helpful.
I do just want to thank Mary specifically. She coordinated this book. And while this seems, when we see it, it seems concise and easy to look through, but it's not easy to compile. A lot of effort goes into putting something like this together. So please convey our gratitude for that.
Thank you.
Well, it's obvious she put a lot of work into it.
She did, and she coordinated with other staff to get all of the information. So she did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay. Sheriff ran out, so I don't guess he's got anything to say. Michelle?
Okay, I have some good news on the, um, districting, um, litigation. So the A C L U attorney contacted me a couple of weeks ago and said that they, um, as an agency, they have agreed to sign on to represent um, the local branch of the N double A C P. Um, so they are identifying, um, some folks who will be stepping up to serve as substitute plaintiffs in that case. Um, they are sending me drafts, hopefully this week, of, um, a motion to, um, substitute the party plaintiff's motion to intervene, um, as the N double A C P. And a motion to amend the judgment. So once we have those finalized, and as soon as we get the legal descriptions, we should be able to submit all of that to the court. Our plan is to submit everything at one time, based on what they're, they've done recently in Leon County. Um, the attorney said when they did this in Leon County, it took the judge three days to sign the order. There was really nothing to it. So that's great news on that part of it. We're still.
Now, is that for relief?
No, they have not agreed to, um, to sign on and to litigate that portion yet.
So where are we on that portion?
Still working on getting the population data. I did get the original file. I've been working on putting it together. It's enormous. Um, they took, um, population census data, voting data, all the way back into the early nineteen hundreds as a part of that case. So there's just a ton of information to go through um, to try to understand where, like, how did we get to, um, to that agreement? We're, the supervisor elections is working on getting the, um, the breakdown of the data that I need from the last election to be able to show that, um, the population data that existed when this order was entered or in the preceding years, that that had substantially changed, um, from not even this election, but from the two thousand and ten election. So we're not just looking at this, uh, you know, the election, but prior to the most recent census, but going back to the election before. So we're not just looking at this, uh, you know, the election prior to the most recent census, but going back to the election before. Um, we may have to get, um, some kind of expert in, um, political analysis to be able to testify to the court. But he knows a lot about politics, but I don't know that he's going to qualify, um, as an expert. You might. So our, our working theory is that the population changes since the time the consent order was put into place have changed, um, so that there's no longer a need for this based on population, but we're also looking at, um, and I've discussed with some of the, um, the N double A C P leaders, that there's been a negative impact on other districts and other candidates in other districts, um, because we're essentially having to, and I hate to use the word, but it really is to segregate, um, the, the black voting population into a single district. And if we start with the presumption that we had to start with in the original case, which is that minority voters need minority candidates, um, in order to further their, um, their interest, then, you know, you can, you can kind of follow that line to, if we put all the, or the majority of the minority voters into a single district, um, that really is going to have a, a negative impact on minorities in the other district. And so it's, it's kind of a reverse segregation argument. But, um, I don't know that the A C L U is going to sign on for that part of the case. Um, they're not necessarily in agreement with us, and I don't think that the local chapter of the N double, N double A C P is in agreement to, um, relieve from the consent judgment. And so far, I haven't found another county that's gotten relief from that judgment, but that's our working theory right now.
Looks like they would, well, at least change it from black to minority.
Um, possibly.
Because to me, that's as bad as.
I don't think that Jackson County has a, um, a substantial minority population other than those that identify as black.
Singles, that black, white, you would think if they would rather have it, uh, minority instead of black.
Just keep us up to speed on.
Winn, just a real quick question. As far as redistricting goes, based on what you said earlier, when will those new districts formally be in place?
So, we're, we're really operating from the standpoint of that the board has approved those new districts. Y'all have approved the map. Um, so for, for the supervisor elections purposes, that, that part has been done. All we're doing now is getting, um, the court's approval. If, if we didn't have this consent order in place, we wouldn't even be drawing up the legal descriptions the way that we are. We would be laying out our, our districts based on the census blocks and doing some things that, um, are just not as intensive, but because we have this consent order that used the legal descriptions for the districts, we're, in order to amend that, we're following that same process. So essentially, your map has been adopted for all purposes, other than getting the court's stamp, um, on changing that.
So when will the new map, they, they'll be working on my southeastern survey, and are we planning on having those, uh, available to us as commissioners pretty quickly?
So, we actually, just for y'all's information, um, Carol had worked with Kevin to go ahead and get the former and then the proposed, because she said she had a lot of potential candidate, um, asking for those, so she just went ahead. She was getting a lot of requests, I don't know how many, a lot of, um, of proposed. I don't know if those have actually been printed yet, but I know she's working with Kevin to get those, so we could definitely get y'all a copy of that, or at least an electronic one. Um, and then Lee says that they will, uh, make an effort to have it wrapped up by the next meeting on the twenty-fifth, the legal description.
Well, we have our map, the one we have.
That's right.
They have changed.
Um, but we can get one actually printed, if anybody would like one. And then from there, I have the contact at the state that we submit all of that to, and I think that's more of a formality.
Right.
Right.
Could you get Joey to produce that one?
Sure.
Wherever you each one of them.
A big one, yeah, we can put it in our college for a week.
And I'd actually like two of them.
Okay, are you finished, Michelle?
Yes.
Well, Ann?
I don't have anything for roundtable, but when you all are done, um, we do have the housing people already here, so we might consider going ahead and rolling into the special meeting and addressing that.
Well, it's ten thirty, so I think we'll be okay.
Okay, so there you go. Good. All right, Paul?
Uh, yeah, one question. Um, you know, several years ago, we spent a lot of money, and I said, we, uh, the county and the court system spent a lot of money on re-renovating the courthouse, the exterior of the courthouse. And, uh, one of the components of that was redoing the, the outside lighting. Um, I've been by the courthouse a number of times, and there's a lot of that outside lighting that's not functioning. Um, and especially, and I, and I think we spent a lot of money on, uh, in-ground lighting around the perimeter that shines up and, and lights up the, the portico shade columns. I don't think any of those lights are working. Can we get, say, like Ricky Spears to go by and look at that and get an idea of what it would take to to get that lighting functioning again? And, and I think, Clay, I, what about the asphalt lights? I think there's several of those.
Several of those are out, and, and they have worked on some of them. We had some issues, I know, on the south side, uh, where the there's a flooding and the, the holding sale, and it ran into the lights.
That alcove on the south side. Were tho, were any of those lights redone as part of the energy, uh?
Yes.
So they've been changed. They were originally, I think, specified as fluorescents. They were changed to LED lights?
It's my understanding, yes.
Johnson Control was, they part of that?
Yes.
Now, I think that was at Johnson Control Project. I did, it'd be nice, again, to s, to see those lights working, operating again.
It, it'd be nice.
Be able to see.
At nighttime.
Yeah. Be able to see.
Yes, I'll be glad to.
But anything else?
I got a couple of things. Uh, I spoke to Jabo yesterday in reference to, uh, you and Daniel and Edison Road, and I guess, uh, some of the work is being done up here by, is A P S A P I Services, uh, by to go out maybe for bid for those three, just give us a quote, uh, bid process, whatever that normal process is for that. And, uh, Daniel, you know, we had it bid out two, two and a half years ago, but the price of asphalt, it went astronomical.
Asphalt and you were chip seal.
Chip seal. That was original.
Add chip, uh, Stevens Road in this.
Just to get a price, that way we can see if this, if that road has deteriorated even more since the two years since we got that bid in nineteen.
Asphalt's higher.
And asphalt's higher, that's right. And it don't look like it's going down, so. And, uh, last thing, I spoke to some of the volunteers today. They're having problems out there around Lake continuously. We addressed this problem back in twenty fifteen with ordinance to allow for private, uh, towers going up to get one-third of tower. Don't look like we don't get one. Think we went into contract with, uh, a company, um, for V H F Digital, and it was done, so I called Amy Fagin, uh, from, um, Old Ward Bay, I think it's M C A now. Um, I, I don't know how much cares act we got left. Is there a amount on that for cares act? That's original, the part that we have a mountain cares act.
Do you know what our balance is?
Yeah, just roughly.
To be, to be fair, um, any dollars that have to be part of the project.
There wa, there will not be any left to the project, will it? I thought we had like one, one, two million left.
No, that was.
We'll have a firmer answer on that at the twenty-fifth, so we had the, some of the American Rescue slated for revenue replacement. Well, then, with the way they had the rules, that wasn't going to work, so we, well, we have this cares money, but with the new rule, um, it actually looks like we might have some revenue replacement for American Rescue, but by the twenty-fifth, we'll have a firmer answer on that, and we can have a true balance for the cares funding.
Okay, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So if we don't, we'll, I'll get with Amy. She sent me a copy, but that was to me, just for my own use, I mean, just for that bid, for that, uh, V H F Digital, but we need to make that happen.
You want to put a tower up there?
No, no, they already got a tower, we already got a tower, we've already worked out at least we were paid on that tower for that, we just have not implemented that, that.
And put the antennas on it?
Yeah, go for the antennas and all, it has not been, the antennas are.
How much money are you talking?
Uh, the quote she gave me without the generator was forty-two five eight six six. Again, uh, get, get a copy of that.
Without a generator?
That's not with a generator, but I put plus a generator. I think the big generator, I had to re-look somewhere around fifteen K for that. Uh, give or take, but she'll have that quote. She gave me a revised vision, so I could do it better.
Well, every time we put antennas on a tower, it's going to be around six thousand dollars?
Well, you got to get somebody.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's for the antennas and all that, yeah. Well, see, we don't own an antenna, that, we, that, that tower did fall into that preview of the public safety thing, because that was previous to that, but, uh, back in fifteen, so well, we just got to get some, uh, they're having, a, as they always have, it's key issues up, uh, there, so that, that's.
So we'll know next meeting.
Yeah, but we, I'd like to make the motion for it to happen, that we'll find twenty next week, so I'll make that motion, we do, and then subject to funding, uh, application coming out.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Hill to fund installing the towers at Round Lake. Uh, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Page. Any questions? And this is for?
B I T F, isn't it?
That the volunteers.
Yeah, well, it's for, it's for power, it's, it's for fire rescue volunteers.
What about the sheriff's?
I'm not sure what the name of the tower is here, if I'll be honest with you, but I.
Yes, and once you guys pay six thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I just knew we was paying a contract on. Right.
Well, are they going to charge us that? Will they pay him his while they're up there?
Oh, I'm sure. I don't know. I went for that. I don't, I don't know anything. All I know is that, uh, the volunteers told me they can't get out. And is, is there, is there something you got pending out there?
We asked an initial cares act for, uh, repeater there, and one of them. Oh, you guys are paying him on that tower, and there's some repeater on it.
Well, do you have a call for yours? Well, I'm, I, well, I didn't know that. I just did B I T F, that's fine. Well, that would also include U H F, it's about, I would, let me include that, U H F. Yeah, yeah, that's, in different frequency.
It's not just the simple putting that in on.
All right.
You got our servers there, radios there that transmit back and forth, so it's. So due, due to that quote, it would actually be over fifteen thousand, you have to do now.
Well, it's a single, there's a single source provider though, I think, M C A, it's on there. There's understated contract. Well, they got bought out, Ward Bay got bought, yeah, make sure, man. Well, I, I'll include U H F. I didn't know that was part of U H F also.
Well, I was just thinking.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, any more questions?
Yeah, I, I, I hate to ask, but I, I'm still unclear actually of what you're asking.
But there's, we, we've reached a contractual agreement with an existing tower there several years ago.
At Round Lake.
At Round Lake, because the, the, there was, or this goes back, I'm literally.
This goes to the volunteer park?
Well, it's, it's actually fire rescue channels, a digital, digital channel for V H F, and now the sheriff would be digital U H F, high, of high frequency. So they have a couple, I think, they've been down there for a long time with transmitting, so we, we went out to bid, I mean, uh, or Amy went out for bid a while back to this process. I only know the date on the bid quote that she gave me, but anyway, I can get it. Anyway, it just served that area better. We, we tried to fit that.
For fire rescue and for sheriff.
And for the sheriff, absolutely. With fire rescue, we'd be going with volunteer, we serve the same channel, but the sheriff thought it was the U H F, a different frequency, but absolutely we'll include that in that, in that, uh, process, so. We'll, we'll subject on funding, but we'll find the funding.
All right, any more questions? Sharing none. I'll let the paper raise your right hand, unless you care. Anything else?
I'll have.
What? Alex? Clay?
Um, found out a little information on gas tax. It's based on a combination of mileage and population that the state does. Uh, the state sends out part of that extra cent straight to the municipalities. We use the same formula for the nine cent that we're getting in the agreement that you, you guys have made with this municipality. We use the same formula, but it is based on the two things, population and mileage. It's a state.
Still want to see what that matters to.
Donna, do you have anything? Okay, I have one thing. Um, had a citizen contact me pertaining to the, uh, stop signs on Timber Lane and Highway Two, uh, requesting that we put up the flashing stop signs. Um, there's been a lot of deaths up there at that intersection. I had talked to the state about even putting in a flashing light or something there to help slow down those trucks and everything. And no luck there, so, uh, I talked with Jabo and I think, Jabo, one can come up, uh, we can get the one sign you said was like thirteen hundred and some dollars?
I think the one we put up at Flat Road, I, I think it was like thirteen hundred bucks, something like that.
If, I would like to put, like, to put up two stop signs, one on each side.
Flashing stop signs.
This would be similar to, like, Tri-County at Highway.
Yeah, some, some of the gym.
Go move.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Kenny. All right, Charlie, you got a question? Well, that's the state, and good luck on getting them to do anything. Well, I've, I've gone round and around with them on that one. So. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And you want these on the, I know we had talked about it, north and south, north and south side.
Yeah, both sides.
Okay.
Be, until harm, to be careful, uh, positioning the one because of the house, those houses right there. Make sure, he may have to go out there at night when.
We always put a piece of cardboard on one side or something.
Make it work. He's got a hood on it.
Right, I, I, I mean, I hadn't seen the one at Flat Road.
It, it's doing a good job. Take the money out of district two's funds. Road and Bridge Funds.
We've rode.
Okay, anything else?
So it's coming out from D five? We'll figure it out. All right, all right.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, um, let's move into the special meeting.
We're going to adjourn this one.
I am, and then, oh, we're going to adjourn for five minutes for Will Ann's break.
Thank you.